Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Whitehall City Council meeting of October 6th, 2020. If we could all rise and for a moment of silence, all but a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Aug, will you please call roll?
Peck.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Conneson.
Present.
Cantor. President Potter.
Present.
Mr. President, move to excuse the absent member, please.
Second.
I've had a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Elmore, to excuse the absent member. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. At this time, we'll have the approval of the minutes from September 15th, 2020, Agenda and regular meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion's been made by Ms. Conneson, second by Mr. Rodriguez. The approval of minutes, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This evening, we have two special presentations. The first presentation will be by Mr. Jonathan Thomas, Vice President of Planning and Evaluation, regarding the ADA MH levy, issue 24 on ballot for November 3rd. If you'd like to, please come forward, please.
I'm trying to open up my glasses so if they could fog me up.
Yes, that's.
Yes, we have to figure out your trip. So, Councilmember President Potter, councilmembers, thank you very much for giving us some time to talk to you about our upcoming ballot issue, issue 24 for ADAMH. First, I'm going to start by talking a little bit about what it is we do at ADAMH, who we serve, some of the current challenges, and then ending with some of those funding needs and how that relates to issue 24. So, for those of you who aren't familiar, ADAMH, the Alcohol Drunk and Mental Health Board of Franklin County, we plan, fund, and evaluate services for the community specifically related to mental health and substance use disorders. So, while we don't provide direct services, we have a broad network of providers. We contract with over 30 different organizations in the community. We do provide direct services to individuals in need. Those services can be crisis services, they can be more traditional treatment services or recovery supports. We've also expanded our portfolio to include family support services, housing, and we have a fairly robust investment in prevention and early intervention. We firmly believe prevention is key, and getting in front of issues as early as possible is important. And in fact, we have investments in almost 16 Franklin County Public Schools districts, including here in Whitehall with Ohio Guidestones. Other agencies we contract with, you may have heard from, I won't go down the list of all 30 so hot, but Mary Haven, the Peer Center, North Community Counseling Center, those are just a few others that I know based on looking at some of the information that you have residents in your community who participate in programs across those providers. Throughout our work in the community partnership, in addition to directly funding services, we're in the process of launching a community needs assessment where we hope to identify health disparities, specifically behavioral health disparities and inequities with access to care, and then work with our community partners to address those barriers. In terms of the population we serve, in 2019, we served over 135,000 individuals. Most of the services that we pay for are services other payers won't. So, we're typically talking about working with the uninsured, but we're paying for services that Medicaid doesn't cover for individuals who happen to have Medicaid coverage. And in fact, in 2019, just under 85% of the individuals that we serve live below the federal property level. So, some of the challenges that we see facing our community right now are actually quite numerous, and I know I was told to keep my remarks tonight to a certain time limit, but just looking at the ongoing impacts of the opioid epidemic, and I know you see that here in Whitehall and we see it throughout Franklin County, we've also experienced across Ohio, and Franklin County has not been immune, over 45% increase in completed suicides over the last 10 years. And this is happening in a community that continues to grow. So, not only are we seeing all these issues occur, but we're projected to have almost 100,000 new residents in Franklin County in the next 10 years. So, if you take those issues and you compound them with a growing population, hopefully you start to see where the need is currently and how it's forecasted to continue to grow. So, then how that translates to funding is that we are currently projecting, without any changes to our levy collection, that we will have a $14 million operating deficit, meaning in order for us to continue services at the current level, our collections will come $14 million short, and that's without that forecast for additional need and additional demand for services. Right now, about 70%, 71% of our revenues and our resources that are available to push back out to our providers come directly from the levy that we pass. Our current levy is set to expire December of 2021, and ADAMH hasn't had an increase to our tax levy in over 30 years. So, despite the fact that our population has grown substantially over the last 30 years and it's in the midst of continuing to grow, our village has not been impacted. So, we are coming to the voters, and we're here tonight asking for your support for issue 24. Understanding that money invested now is going to help improve issues and mitigate issues in the future for our community, the Franklin County Commissioners have approved issue 24, which is a five-year renewal of our current 2.2 mil levy, plus an additional 0.65 mil of new levy collections. This new village request will be on the ballot on November 3rd, and if passed, it will result in $1.90 per month, or $22.75 per year, for $100,000 of home property value. Those new collections would begin in the year of 2022. So, we believe our current investments are working. We believe the demand is there and they continue to grow, and that this request will provide resources to ensure that we can continue to provide a safety net for our community. So, we're seeking your support with issue 24. And in addition to seeing if there are any questions, I would be remiss if I didn't also say if you would like additional information beyond what I've offered tonight on our levy, you can go to ADAMHlevy.com and find much more information there, including some of the other endorsements we've received and support for that forecast. With that, I will see if there are any questions about issue 24 and the impact of our community.
Yes, how much do you project at this 0.65 mil will raise per year?
Per year? Per year, so it should generate close to, and I don't have official numbers for you from our CFO, but it's approximately $20 million in additional collections.
Are there other questions?
No, thank you very much.
Good program.
Yes, it is.
Very, very good program.
Thank you.
So, there's nothing further, thank you so much, and we will be acting on this resolution this evening.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Our second special presentation will be, please chief, by Kristin. Talking about the SWAT vehicle. Evening, Chief.
Evening, President Potter, appreciate it, council. I don't have a lengthy thing for you, so I'm sure you're happy about that. I know we have three ordinances from you for law enforcement trust fund expenditures, which of course is our drug seizure money. One of those that I was sending an email about, I can answer the other two if you're concerned about those as well. I'll also stick to the vehicle, which I think was the question, but if you have the others, I'll cover those as well. The vehicle, we're requesting to spend $342,000 of our law enforcement trust fund money against drug seizure money, not tax dollars. And the purpose in that vehicle, literally from the moment I arrived here, when we recognized it, we had a SWAT vehicle, immediately knew, our SWAT team, I immediately knew they didn't have anything to protect them in some of the situations they've been involved in. They had been involved in situations, barricades and things like that, where people from inside the houses were shooting at them. Terry McDowell, Eric Ploncase comes to mind, if we would have had a vehicle like that and was prolonged, we'd have something to protect officers that got closer up to the scene, let them down quick, but those types of situations is why we would want that type of vehicle. I'll respond to a question I got, which was, this is, why do we need an assault vehicle or something of that nature? This is not an assault vehicle, there's nothing assaultable about this vehicle, there's nothing on the vehicle that would do anything that could assault anybody. The way I look at this vehicle, again, from the moment I recognize our SWAT team did not have one, was it's like a ballistic vest, we wear a vest to stop bullets personally. Our team is inside of a van that a .22 could shoot through, they're all cramped in there as they're arriving, doesn't take much to shoot them through that van before they could get out. So, this is basically a really big ballistic vest surrounding these officers and keeping them safe. That's really all this vehicle really is. It also helps us extract people in prolonged barricades, victims as well as innocent people on the inside. It has no weaponry on the system or anything of that nature, it's just one really big, thick vehicle that will stop bullets. And again, it's not being used or asking for tax dollars, we're asking to use the trust fund money, which is specifically for this purpose. And then I could answer the other two, if you're interested in those other two requests. If you have any questions.
How soon would we have this?
These things are in high demand, so I would say if we got approval on this and we place the order this month, nine months probably.
Wow.
Almost a year.
So, you've pretty well specced out what your.
Yes, sir.
Chief, could this vehicle be used as an operational base in, say, an emergency such as a weather emergency or anything like that, or when, you know, our communications goes out?
We could put some communications in it, that's what the command vehicle is mostly useful, Mayor. There definitely has to command capabilities, because if we have to get close to a situation and we need communication and we don't have the communication vehicle with us, we're fortunate, we're small enough that we can, we don't have a lot of communication problems. But given a lot of the situations that we're dealing with, with unrest and things of that nature, that these, this is the type of thing that allows us to go into, even in some bad weather situations, to go into places and get people out and extract them when there's violence, looting and things of that nature that's going on, so. And we don't need as many officers in that vehicle for that particular time, and it's not being used in, it's a SWAT vehicle, so we don't have a full team. Other places use it, we don't have high winds, we don't have hurricanes and things like that, but that's what some other communities use them for, because sometimes the U.S. can't move around with those types of vehicles.
So, what are we using now? Do we have the command vehicle or?
We have both, I think.
We have a van, and we have, we have a command vehicle, but that's not a SWAT vehicle. It says SWAT on the side, but it's not, it's not, no SWAT capabilities. And then we have basically a panel van, any type of work van.
Oh, okay. We definitely need something better to protect our officers.
I believe so, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming up, Chief, I appreciate it.
Chief, thank you so much. That now brings us to our first poll public of the evening, and I know we've got one letter to be read into the record, Ms. Aug.
Paul Werther, 44, 83, San Jose Lane, Whitehall, Ohio. Good evening. A quick request for your consideration. I've been watching meetings on Facebook Live and request whomever is controlling camera views, can you please, during presentations that have slideshows, use the camera that will give us viewers the same view as those in attendance? Thank you.
And will now come to standing committee reports. Administration Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration Financial Management, did meet on the 22nd of September, where we discussed 11 ordinances and I think one resolution to be introduced tonight. I'm in a circle, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Adequacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Adequacy did meet, thank you, Bob, for helping me out on that. Chairperson Bailey. The minutes are on file, there are no drafts or pending legislation, we will meet again following Tuesday at about 6:30. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards Enforcement also met two weeks ago, we have no pending legislation, minutes are on file, we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met two weeks ago, minutes are on file, and we'll meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Terrific, thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met two weeks ago, our minutes are on file, we have no drafts or pending legislations at this time, we will meet next Tuesday sometime around 6:30.
Public Safety, Chairperson Thompson.
Thank you, President Potter. Public Safety met last, actually, two weeks ago, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week on Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Parks and Recreation Commission, with Chairperson Cantor not here, Chairperson Conneson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met two weeks ago, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week on Tuesday, maybe around 6:40.
There are none. Official reports, Mayor Magger.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to just say that I support ordinances 74, 75, and 76 regarding expenditure of law enforcement trust fund monies, and I fully support resolutions 36 and 37, and would ask that they be passed in the first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Vivids is not with us this evening, City Auditor Mr. Miller's not with us this evening, Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Director of Public Safety, Mr. Van Grae.
I don't have an official report, but I would ask for consideration for the 74, 75, 76, and Resolution 36.
Thank you. Treasurer Quinsell's not with us this evening. The following official reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting, the Treasurer's Investment Report for August 2020, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for August 2020, the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for August 2020. Communications, Petitions, and Claims, there have been no communications, petitions, and claims filed in the council office since our last meeting. We now have a public hearing this evening, Franklin County Annual CDVG Allocation Grant, Zach Woodruff, Director of Public Service, will be addressing that. At this point, I would ask you to please step forward, state your name, and your address of record.
Mr. President, I'm actually going to turn it over to Jenna Garen, our Economic Development Manager.
She can state her name.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Jenna Garen, I'm the Economic Development Manager. We'll kind of get this pulled up here. I'll go ahead and get started. We are working on applying for the Franklin County 2021 Community Development Lot Grant Program. This is a biannual program that is a federal grant through the Federal Housing and Urban Development Department, and they are for states, cities, and counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, by expanding economic opportunities principally for low and moderate income persons. Thank you.
Just for the record, by the way, anybody watching this at home, these slides are available on our website and on our Facebook page.
And we are monitoring for questions from the public as well, if they have any questions on the project. Julie, do you have one for me, one more? So, this is part of the citizen participation requirement for the grant. As a government body applying for the funding, we have to hold one public hearing to allow the public to have an input on the project.
And so, for this particular project, much like our OPWC, in the age of COVID, they need to restrict public gatherings, we are using Facebook Live as a tool where the public has access to the meetings, and then to be able to ask any questions they might have about the specific project.
Next slide, thank you. So, this is the road that we are looking to have funded, the one that's shaded yellow there for the new development at Broad and Hamilton Road, and I don't know if you have anything to add about the road itself, Seth?
Just that it's going to be built to city standards, curvy gutter, sidewalks, street lighting, those kind of things. There'll be obviously a water line put in place as well as sanitary net storm.
Excellent. So, the total project cost is about $2,246,607.50. The maximum amount that we are allowed to request for CDVG funding is $250,000, so that's what we're going to request for this project?
So, just to add to that, so again, our grant request is $250,000, the balance will be funded, working with our private developer, or in other funding opportunities that we are exploring at the moment. The goal, obviously, would to have that gap filled in another, of a number of different funding sources.
At this time, we will take any questions or comments from council or from the public on Facebook Live.
And we did, I'll ask Ms. Aug, did you have anything communicated to you, either for or against us?
No.
No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Aug to take a roll, and whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation, a list on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have got no legislation for consideration this evening. Second reading, we have ordinance 67, 2020, approving and making assumption appropriation in the amount of $70,000 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Income Tax Refunds Expense Account 101.350.57,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 67, 2020, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Order 67, 2020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison, and asked for the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug?
Needs amended.
I'm sorry?
Amended.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, as amended. So, we need to have a motion.
As read.
As read.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 67 and amend as read.
Second.
Order 67, 2020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison, as read, and for the suspension of all rules.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Ordinance 67, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 33, 2020 will be read by title only, approving the recommendations of the City of Whitehall Tax and Senate Review Council for tax year 2019, again, by title only. That now brings us to our first readings, and we are going to move Resolution 36, 2020, and Resolution 37, 2020 to the top of this, recognizing we have some folks here this evening and don't necessarily want to sit through everything else. So, Resolution 36, 2020 honoring the Whitehall Division of Fire for their dedication, service, and commitment to the Whitehall community, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 36, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Resolution 36, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Conneson, second by Mr. Morrison, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Move to adopt by Ms. Conneson, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Resolution 36, 2020 has been adopted, and at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Conneson, can you please read and present this?
Absolutely. This is Resolution 36, 2020. This is a resolution honoring the Whitehall Division of Fire for their dedication, service, and commitment to the Whitehall community and declaring an emergency. Whereas, it is the desire of this council to recognize and honor the Whitehall Fire Department for their outstanding dedication, service, and commitment, and whereas, it is recognized by Whitehall City Council that every firefighter and paramedic in the Whitehall Division of Fire upholds their core values, integrity, teamwork, caring, courage, honesty, community, and commitment, and whereas, it is recognized by Whitehall City Council that every Whitehall firefighter puts their lives on the line each day and performs selfless acts of bravery by facing unknown challenges, dangers, and threats to keep our citizens safe and protect our community. And whereas, it is recognized by Whitehall City Council that the Whitehall Division of Fire serves our community and the citizens of Whitehall with valor, dignity, and integrity, and whereas, Whitehall City Council charges each Whitehall police officer with proudly serving our community, trading all of life and property, we now protect with respect and dignity as if it is their own. Whereas, Whitehall City Council is supportive and applauds Chief Preston Moore's Safe Station Program, Safety Count Program, which includes Stop, Drop, and Roll, and it also includes Eat It, Exit Drills in the House, Tools Are Not Toys, and Firefighters Are Your Friends. And whereas, Whitehall City Council recognizes our Whitehall firefighters for their continued unseen acts of sacrifice and heroism, especially in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic crisis. They have bravely continued to meet the call of duty by risking their own personal safety. And whereas, it is recognized by Whitehall City Council that the Whitehall Division of Fire has been and always will be a source of inspiration and pride to all the citizens of Whitehall, and such effort should be recognized, encouraged, and celebrated. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Whitehall, on behalf of all their citizens, wishes to express their sincere appreciation and thanks to the Whitehall Division of Fire for their individual and collective efforts, and we wish them continued success, health, and happiness. That this council hereby declares the week of October 9th, which is Fire Prevention Week, as Whitehall Division of Fire Day, in recognition of the Whitehall's Division of Fire commitment to proudly serving our community, trading all of life, property, and vow to protect with respect and dignity as if it were their own, that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public, health, peace, safety, and welfare, and for further reason that the city and all citizens wish to express their gratitude during Fire Prevention Week. Wherefore, this resolution shall go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. Chief Moore, can I have you contact her?
I want to thank you so much for taking the time to honor us tonight, to say that COVID has been a, or 2020's been a remarkable year, just to say it least, and we have an amazing, amazing group of people that are doing great work for you every day, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Some of them are running.
Yes, they are.
Next is Resolution 37, 2020, supporting the 2020 ADAMH levy, appearing on November 3rd, 2020 ballot, as issue 24, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 37, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Resolution 37, 2020 has been introduced by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Conneson, with suspension of all rules, any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I'm going to move for adoption.
Second.
Motion for adoption by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Resolution 372020 has been passed, and I will go ahead and read this. Resolution 372020, supporting the 2020 Adam H. Levy appearing on a November 3rd 2020 ballot as issue 24 and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the Franklin County Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Board, Adam H., helps residents find the right places for affordable and quality alcohol substance use disorder and mental health services in Franklin County. And whereas, Adam H. as a good community partner, helps fund 33 provider agencies in the county that provide mental health and addiction services to a growing vulnerable population. And whereas, Adam H. provides alcohol and drug addiction and mental health crisis services to anyone in Franklin County regardless of insurance or Medicaid coverage, as 85% of the people served live below the federal poverty level. And whereas, Adam H. is committed to cooperatively addressing inadequacies, inequities, and the behavioral health disparities that result from systemic issues of poverty and racism. And whereas, more than 71% of the Adam H. resources come from the current 2.2 mil property tax levy that expires in December 2020, 2021. And whereas, the levy mileage for Adam H. has not increased in nearly 30 years, while the number of people seeking help has grown dramatically, rising 72% since 2014. And whereas, Adam H. needs additional funding to address the increasing opiate crisis and devastating suicide rate affecting Franklin County. And whereas, Human Services Levy Review Committee recommends, and the Franklin County Board of Commissioners has approved placing a five-year 2.2 mil renewal levy with a .65 mil increase to support Adam H. on the November 3rd 2020 ballot with collection beginning in 2022. And whereas, the City of Whitehall is pleased to support and endorse issue 24, the Adam H. levy. If passed, homeowners would pay an additional $1.90 per month for $100,000 in home property for the continued vital services Adam H. and now therefore, be resolved by the sixth day of October that the City of Whitehall officially endorses issue 24, the Adam H. levy. Mr. President, if you come forward, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the city council, and we wish you much success.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. We appreciate the good works that you are doing.
Again, now that you're this president and all of them have left, your fire department and the great work they've done with Safe Station and the remarkable Hoover Lab, that 's had with many of our other investments, it's really been tremendous resource for the whole county, but needed just beyond my role.
Thank you for the work you did.
Thank you.
We will now return to the original agenda. Ordinance 722020, providing for issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,805,000 in anticipation of issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of a court-approved final settlement of claims made by the city in the case of the City of Whitehall, Etau versus Olander, Thomas J. Etau, case number 2007 EVH 060217 in Franklin County Municipal Court and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 722020 and move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey has introduced ordinance 722020, second by Mr. Rodriguez, with suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde?
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 722020 has been adopted. Order 732020, providing for issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $9,840,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring acquisitions by the city of a portion of approximately 37-acre parcel in the northeast corner of Hamilton Road and East Broad Street, all in support of economic development and job creation within the city that will result in the elimination of blight and nuisance on and around the acquired property and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 732020 and move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Order 732020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 732020 has been adopted. Order 742020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $4,000 from unappropriate monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund 241 to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund expense account 241-000-50,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 742020 move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Order 742020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison, and requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 742020 has been adopted. Order 752020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $6,000, $6,400 from unappropriate monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund 241 to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund expense account 241-000-50,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 752020 move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Order 752020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde?
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 752020 has been adopted. Order 762020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $324,000 from unappropriate monies in the Law Enforcement Trust Fund 241 to the Law Enforcement Trust Fund expense account 241-000-50,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, it's my honor, I think, it's a long time coming, to introduce ordinance 762020 and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Order 762020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison, and requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 762020 has been adopted. Order 772020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $920.70 from unappropriate monies in the Wim Petty Fund 279 to various accounts in the Wim Petty Fund 279 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 772020 and move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Order 772020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez, and with the request of suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde?
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 772020 has been adopted. Order 782020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $6,343.63 from the Tax Increment Financing Fund 279 to various expense accounts in the 279 Fund and authorizing the distribution of a portion of the fee payments attributed to each of the TIF in a total amount of $6,343.63. The TIF fees account 279.000.59,600 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 782020 move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. He has introduced ordinance 782020, and second by Mr. Morrison, requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 782020 has been adopted. Order 792020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $82,184.98 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101 to the Board of Health Expense Account 101.950.58,500 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 792020 move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey has introduced ordinance 792020, second by Ms. Elmore, and requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Connison?
Yes.
Order 792020 has been adopted. Order 802020, approving and making appropriations transfer in the amount of $15,000 from a street materials expense account 201.000.52,000 to the signals signs expense account 201-000-53,500 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 802020 move for suspension of rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey has introduced ordinance 802020, second by Ms. Heck, and requests the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Ogde, please call roll. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Ordinance 80-2020 has been adopted. Finally, this evening, under first reading, we have Resolution 35-2020, resolving to approve then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 35-2020, move for suspension of the rules.
Second.
Resolution 35-2020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez, and requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Resolution 35-2020 has been adopted. As we know, we've already taken care of the other two resolutions, so that brings us to our second poll public. Ms. Aug has shared with me, we do not have anything for the second poll public, so I'll then move to our community debate board.
I have some things. I know.
You're always like those two persons to look at for a question.
Yes, yes, yes. And October is a busy, busy month. Everybody noticed the flags on Yearling Road for Domestic Violence Month, and it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I believe it's, what did my daughter tell me? Something, I don't know. I'll get back with you on that one. Anyhow, it's gonna be Halloween soon, and WCCA has several contests going on, so hopefully you are all on our Facebook page, Whitehall Community Celebration Association. October 26th through the 29th, WCCA judges will be going around to judge houses, so everybody get your spooky stuff up. And we also have a costume contest going on, and it is for all ages, so from zero to 110. Everybody can put your costumes on, and we will be judging those, and those will be online, so that'll be a lot of fun. And then we also have a Halloween trick-or-treat, drive-through, drive-by, whatever you want to call it. It'll be October 31st from 1:00 to 2:30 over at Atna Road Elementary School. All you have to do is bring your car and your little goblins, ghosts and goblins, in